The June 3rd, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting is called to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will everyone please remain standing? Let the Archbishop charge you to peace. Come and give us a prayer.
Praise the Lord, everybody. Dear heavenly Father, Father by Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we thank you right now for the gathering of your citizens and those who will provide services for the great city of Inkster. We thank you right now for the mayor and the council, police chief, and all the administration that is here. But Father, let your Spirit be in this meeting. Give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, therefore we can go forth and carry out the work that you have called us to do. In the mighty name of Jesus, let everyone say, "Amen."
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Oden has an excused absence. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Paul Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilwoman Chisholm.
Present.
We have six present tonight, and we still have a corner.
That's good. Have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do we need to swap around the presentations? Oh, no, we're okay time-wise, right? We're okay time-wise?
No.
Okay. All right, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yep.
We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda as is?
Support.
Hold on, we gotta add item, closed session. So, we'll add item B. Gardner?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the add-on.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. First presentation. Presentation for the first-place winners for the Memorial Day Parade. You want me to do it? Okay. If it's easier for you, yeah.
It's very easy, because I'm kinda crippled here.
Somebody announce that, you can get around.
Okay. The mayor of the city of Inkster will be presenting the first-place trophy to the winners of the Memorial Day Parade. Our judges chose, our judges who were, uh, city clerk, uh, Wayne County Clerk Kathy Garrett, 36 district ju- uh, duh, judge Kenneth King, and councilwoman from Romulus, Virginia Williams, chose the Christ Temple City of Refuge dancers for that award. Now, uh, we're really proud to present this to them, since we had such a long time to watch them dance. I think they stood out there about 25 minutes.
Aw, that's nice.
Let's have a dance-off right now.
All right, all right.
Now, Wiley, keep the meeting going, come on.
Everybody hit it.
Our next presentation is on the Rouge Valley Sewer Disposal System by Wayne County DPS. And Vito, what's Vito's last name?
Canelli.
Canelli, come on up.
On up.
He's got a great name.
What's your good news? I wonder what's your good news?
Good evening. Uh, I'll keep my presentation fairly brief. Uh, the, the executive summary was handed out, and there were copies available for folks to understand the, the work that's been done over the past several years. This is related to the Wayne County Rouge Valley Sewer Disposal System. So, a number of the communities in, uh, Wayne County, northern and western part, are part of the Rouge Valley system. It's a sewer system that takes the flow, collects it from each of the individual communities, and transports it down to the Great Lakes Water Authority where it's treated at the Detroit Wastewater Treatment Facility. Our system has been under state consent decree for quite a while. During rain events, we get more flow in the system than the system can handle. And so, this study was, was done to determine the next steps to solving this problem. A number of steps have been taken over the years, and the situation has gotten better, but we still do not meet the state's standards. So, it's necessity to, to keep on going. A number of, uh, activities were undertaken, things like, uh, flow metering, where we put, uh, devices in the sewer system to measure the amount of flow, particularly during rain events. Then there are some sewer modeling that's done, computer modeling, to predict what'll happen under different conditions from what we observed during the certain rain events that we measured. And finally, we get into looking at alternatives, looking at how best to handle the flow. One of the worst problems that we found that we have is the river, because the sewer system generally lies in the low-lying areas along the river, both along the lower Rouge and the middle Rouge. When we get large rain events, the river comes up, and our manholes sit in the very low-lying areas. So, any amount of, uh, opening that we have in the tops of the manholes or in the sides due to cracks, whatever, whatever can occur, uh, water gets into the sewer system from the river. And when the water gets in from the river, uh, the system cannot take as much flow from the sanitary sewage that it's supposed to be taking, and we end up with sanitary sewer overflows, which is the basic problem we're trying to correct. So, the alternative that we're recommending is basically called asset management. Uh, it's the best first step, take care of what you already have, rather than building new things to try to take care of it. Take what you have and try to make sure that it's working well. So, for example, the manhole structures, making sure that the lids on the manholes are very tight, um, that there's no holes in it. Um, our system, much of our system, the newest parts of our system, uh, were built, uh, over 50, 60 years ago. So, there's some aging of the system that has happened, and so there's cracks in the system that need to be repaired. There are different kind of things. Another piece that we, we find is that the, um, the pipes themselves have, the interior surface has deteriorated. Um, so there is, um, normally the inside, uh, surface is relatively smooth and can carry the flow. Well, when you get deterioration, it gets rough and it can't carry as much flow. So, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to put a camera through the sewer system, identify where the problems are, and to correct those problems. Unfortunately, when we have a big regional system like this, the pipes are very large, and so the cost of rehabilitation of those pipes gets very large as well. So, unfortunately, uh, even our lowest-cost alternative, um, has an estimated total cost of $80 million across for all the communities that are part of the system. And so, in the, uh, first five years, what we're looking at is doing a gradually ramping into an asset management program. We'll, where we will inspect the pipes, we will, um, determine what kind of rehabilitation is necessary, and actually do the rehabilitation on this five-year program. In order to do it at the least cost, uh, what we're looking to do is the state does have a program of subsidized loans. It is a loan program, not a grant program, uh, but the, the loan terms are usually pretty good, around 2%. So, the action tonight is to allow us to apply for that, uh, low-interest-rate loan from the state, uh, by the county in order to do the work. And so, really, that's what we're asking you, that Wayne County will actually, uh, be taking up the, the resolution, because they would be the ones who actually, uh, borrowing the money and implementing the program. But each of the member communities are being asked to support the program. The state has told us that in addition to the county adopting the program, there, they need the support from all the member communities in order to proceed with a low-interest-rate loan. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you may.
I was just gonna say, can we reiterate for the citizens who are here that weren't here during orientation, when we kinda talked about it, what happens if we don't opt in? If we say no?
If you say no, then basically you do not qualify for the low-interest loan, and you would probably then have to go for conventional financing, which would be higher interest rates, so the cost would be higher. And, and basically, I, again, if the state would force you to do that, they would, they would come back through the, the court orders to force it to occur, and it'll be a higher cost by the time you get through the litigation, higher interest rates. Uh, you'll still have to do it, but you'll end up paying more cost to do it.
Um, how, how much would Inkster have to pay?
So, there is a, a chart on the last page of, of that executive summary, and what you'll see is that, um, there's a gradual ramp up over the first several years. So, for, um, what's shown as 2019, that's from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th of 2022. And that cost is estimated to be $147,000. And then you'll see subsequent years, it will go up as they, uh, as they ramp up the program to, to do the work. Now, one of the things, uh, there's a lot of projections that we have to make, because the sewers have not been all televised at this point. We've had to make projections based on what we've seen in other locations. If what we've seen in the other locations is worse than average, then the cost will end up being less. If what we find is, is that the areas that we had previously were better than average, then the cost might go up. So, it just depends on the existing system. But this first phase is really taking care of the existing system. It's really not building new, new facilities. The success of the first phase of the program, depending on how successful we are, will determine whether there's any further action required, which might require new facilities. And that, um, that would be the second alternative, where it, uh, projects that, uh, some, perhaps some storage might need to be built, and then the, the cost goes up to $127 million.
Any other questions up there?
Yeah, this percentage rate of cities, that's based on what?
It's, it's based on your use of the system. Uh, each year, they look at, uh, the water use for each of the cities, which is called their base flow, and then there's, uh, how much additional flow to that, and that's, uh, based on the formula, based on the characteristics of the city. And so, each community, uh, may use more or less flow from previous years, and so that's adjusted on an annual basis. I think Inkster's in, uh, a little bit better position. I think your numbers went down a little bit.
Yeah. Anybody else up there?
Can we trade with North?
You wanna trade with North? Billy have 9,000 people.
This year is 35,000.
Now, because we didn't have the presenter at orientation, Dawn, if you have a question? Oh, okay, okay. Councilwoman, uh, you're gonna ask, uh, Dawn's question?
No, she already did.
Oh, she already did? Okay, great. Anybody else have any questions, because he was not here at orientation, so you get a chance to ask him a question?
Wasn't there a, I thought the number was 51 earlier, 51 million? And now you said 80 million?
So, it's, it's, I think it's, uh, 51 over the first five years. So, if you take a look at that first alternative, it is, it's not just a five-year program, it actually goes on for longer. So, the 80, uh, 80 million is over the longer period of time, but the first five years is 51 million.
Okay.
Just, just for clarity, um, the, the, we doing a repair of the system, correct?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Are we doing a repair of the system?
Yes, it's, it's basically repairs.
Okay, um, isn't I asking that question, because we have a lot of, um, water main breaks? And we're paying a lot of money already to repair the system. Um, how does that play into what we have already? Are we gonna go through the whole system and...
So, of course, um, for example, your water main breaks that you handle as the city of Inkster, that's your local system. So, your water mains that you, you own and operate. Just like with the water system, you take, uh, flow from a regional provider, in that case, it's the Great Lakes Water Authority, and they have their own system of pipes, and you contribute to that regional system. In your rates that you pay, you contribute to that regional system.
Okay.
This is the same way on the sewer system side. So, the local sewers, so Mr. Vivins and his crews take care of the local sewer system, and then the county then takes care of that, and you saw, you pay for that through your rates.
Okay. Well, to the citizens, one question I did ask during orientation, um, does this have anything to do with our basins flooding? So, I guess the answer we've gotten earlier was, was no.
That, that's correct. The, the sewer system is, is acting appropriately, and I think that there's a, um, generally...
Maintain the overflow that flows into the Rouge River?
Yes, this is to do with the overflow.
Because, you know, we had this conversation years ago, the reason why we built the basins was to, uh, to control the overflow of sanitation water that was flowing into the Rouge River.
So, this, this project, how long, oh, will you do, I'm sorry, uh, member Williams? Are you do?
Are you?
All right, thank you. Um, so this, uh, how long a period is this, and where are we starting from? Which community? Is there any plan like that yet?
In, in terms of where in the system the work is, is going to start and where it's going to finish, um, it, it is not planned out at this point. There is a plan to show all the work that needs to be done, but it's not scheduled out for specific reaches to be done in the first year, for example, and so forth. Uh, there is one reach that, uh, showed up as, as the worst for river inflow, and that was the area, um, it was more along the middle Rouge at the very downstream portion, so through Dearborn Heights and, and through there, and it might catch a little bit of Inkster as it goes downstream of there, but a little bit to the north of you, and, uh, along the middle Rouge was primarily the, the place where we saw the worst problems.
So, this is a five-year plus, is there any, um, is there any end to it? Like I said, that, how long is the entire project supposed to take?
So, ideally, if we're able to take care of it with just the, um, the asset management work, that the repairs we do turn out to be effective, um, other communities are doing some inflow removal, they're doing some work to try to get rainwater out of the system. Uh, again, they're doing that at local expense. If all those activities, uh, get us to the endpoint where we're able to meet the state's standards, then essentially at the end of the five years, we just have to keep on maintaining, uh, with the work that's identified in that asset management. If we can't quite reach it, then we'll probably have to build some storage, and the size of the storage will be based on how good of a job we were able to do.
Is that gonna require additional funding?
That would require additional funding at that point.
So, now you're, what you're telling us is you will be finished in five years, right?
More money, more problems. Anybody else have anything up there?
Let's have one more question. What guarantee does Wayne County have for all the municipalities that have to go into this program? That if something happens, they will be responsible? Who's gonna be responsible repairing something if it's not fixed right? Is it any guarantees that gonna...
So, when, um, so when the county does the, the work, that work typically includes, first, there's gonna be an inspection to see what condition the pipes are in. Then the engineers will do a design to determine what kind of repairs are necessary, and then they go out for bids and get a contractor to effectuate those repairs. So, the contractor is responsible for making sure the repairs are done correctly and that the repairs last.
And will we have, uh, a representative from each municipality go to those meetings?
Yes.
You? Okay, well, I mean, I don't know if you, I know you go to meetings, but I didn't know if he was going to this one. Okay, okay. All right.
Yes.
You know, he goes everything. Anybody else have any question? He needs excuse to get out of office, he's at the meeting. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you ask?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that Sammy back there? Okay.
So, the, the agency that coordinates all of this is Wayne County, and Wayne County has certain policies under which it does procurement and so forth, and so all the work has to go under the Wayne County policies. So, I think they do have a, certain policies for, uh, working with disadvantaged businesses and with the distressed communities of certain type, so...
Not disadvantaged businesses, I'm talking about contractors that's licensed and bonded to do this type of work, are you all willing to work with them, that's in the city of Inkster?
So, the, Wayne County has to, so they have their policies under which they do that. And I'm, I'm not that familiar with their specific policies, but it's a Wayne County program, and it's working with Wayne County.
We can certainly find out. All right, well, thank you, appreciate it.
There's another question.
Is Inkster having inspections on record, and will that be taken into account if they did in previous years, perhaps? Because we have to do an inspection or see what the deal may lead before we do any work, right?
So, the, the inspections, um, against city of Inkster, I'm sure the DP, DPS is doing inspections of your pipes, but they would not normally be going into Wayne County's pipes. So, this is to inspect Wayne County's pipes?
And we're currently inspect, thank you, we're currently inspecting our pipes through the Saw Grand Program, where we have camera technology, and we're going through the looks and see what all our sewer pipes throughout the whole city, what kind of condition they're in, so we'll know what we have to replace and fix, infrastructure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You'll get that bill later. We're putting together a capital asset plan to replace our roads and infrastructure, which we, we don't have a choice, we have to do. So, you'll see that presentation from Mr. Vivins, so you can throw fruit at him.
Blame it on Vivins.
Yeah, blame it on Vivins. All right, well, thank you, that's our last presentation. We'll move on down to consent agenda? We have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Been properly moved and supported? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Boards and Commissions?
I have none at this time, Mr. Mayor.
You two talkative people down there have any boards and commissions? No? All right. Okay, good, all right, we move on down to new business?
Consideration and approval for city council to adopt these public resolutions on behalf of the city of Inkster from Wayne County Department of Public Services to allow them to make improvements to the Rouge Valley Sewer Disposal System project plan.
Who's gonna be the brave person?
So moved, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported? Discussion?
Yes. What we were chatting about was, we need clarification for the citizens watching and those who are here, how this is actually gonna be paid, because taxes are on water bills, so you know what to look for when this all starts to take effect.
I think you kinda talked about the loan, they're going out to get a 2% interest loan, and then the city of Inkster, according to their fee schedule, will pay back every year, it'll go up every year. We'll pay back a certain amount or percentage every year, and it goes up. It's on that last schedule we passed out.
Twice, twice a year that we'll make that.
Twice a year, I'm sorry.
It's, so you're clearly understand, this is separate from our monthly billing.
That's what I'm saying, it's separate.
Yeah, this is separate. Yeah, this is separate. Yeah, we'll make two payments, oh, we will make two payments twice a year on this project, but it's not, no, just two payments, twice a year. This is separate from our monthly billing.
All right, the question is how the residents pay?
So, I, I, I think we, we explained how the money's gonna be sent, we haven't explained where the money's gonna come from. So, in short, the money, um, these, 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 uh, expenses are paid out of the water, the city's water fund, which is, um, funded by the, largely by the water rates. So, to whatever extent additional expenses are, are incurred by the water fund, they will then, at some point, need to be offset by corresponding increases in, uh, in all likelihood, they would need to be offset by corresponding increases in the water rates, because if we have some unbudgeted expenses, we either gotta offset those expenses elsewhere in the water fund, so that it's a net-net zero, or we gotta increase revenues in order to cover those, those expenses. So, one of the, um, most likely, uh, results will be, um... One of the most likely results that this will cause an increase in water rates.
Remember who told you that, too. We're all innocent up here.
My name is Jerome Vivins.
Hold up, sure, sure.
I wanna understand clearly, because at first I heard that there will be two water bills, so I wanna make sure it's not something that could be added to your taxes that could push a home into foreclosure compared to...
Not, not directly, not directly. So, so, and, and, so just to be clear, um, again, we, we, this is coming out of the water fund. We have expenses and revenues, you know, so we, we set the water rates in order for us to cover the projected expenses. That's kinda the plan with the water rates. The, the biggest expenses in, within the water fund are the wholesale purchases that we do of the water. For every unit of water that we, we, is used by a customer, we purchase that from, from the, uh, the Great Lakes Water Authority. So, and then we also have the, the maintenance and upkeep of the system. So, we, we, we project out what all those costs are, and we set our water rates. Uh, right now, they're at $15.40 per unit of water, next year, they'll be going up one nickel to $15.45. So, this, these costs that are currently being discussed are not a part of the, they were not a part of the, um, budget when we set that water rate. So, what I was trying to say is that, if we, when you add in additional costs, we either gotta cut the cost, which there, it's hard to do that, or we gotta increase the revenue by virtue of the water rates themselves. Now, as it relates to the, um, the payment, uh, or, or you asking about the property taxes, what can happen is that you can have, if the, if, if a customer does not pay their water bill, the city can then put it onto the property taxes, if, uh, a delinquent, you can roll it over onto the property taxes. That could, you know, indirectly cause a foreclosure, um, because if the, if, if, uh, a water bill becomes overdue by a certain length of time, we can then, and we, we by policy are required to roll it over onto the, uh, tax bill. And then if that goes unpaid, that can cause a foreclosure situation.
Okay, all right, hopefully everybody understands it, the pain is coming. So, it sounds, it looks like the bills are gonna go up at some point. Y'all ready? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I want to, we have to.
Wow. Well, we have to, it's mandated, so there's nothing we can do.
All those opposed? All right, it passes.
Item B is to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session. Gardner?
So moved.
Been properly moved and supported? Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Now, public participation. Oh, Mary McLennan, oh! Glenn Anderson's office.
It's over now, Mayor. Uh, good evening, council, uh, mayor, all the council people, all the dignitaries here and the fine citizens of Inkster, it's always a pleasure to be here. I bring you greetings from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, and I do want you to know that I have the park schedules with me tonight, I have a number of them, if anybody needs the park schedules. There's just so many activities in the Wayne County parks, and Wayne County Parks is celebrating their 100th anniversary, and with that, there's going to be so much activity. For example, on, uh, Saturday, July 13th, there'll be a Fun Fest, and there'll be a Nink... And there'll be a Ninkin Meals in Westland, and it's an all-day event. So you want to make sure that you get the park schedule, so you'll have something to do this summer. And I do have a number of them with me, uh, it's just so much to do and you don't want to be left out. Also, as a reminder, uh, June twelfth, I think I said the ninth, but it's the twelfth, which is next Wednesday, is the dinner, the free senior appreciation dinner. And again, it's for the seniors who have already R S V P'd. Because if you haven't, you will not be going, okay? So this is not a new, this is not a new announcement today. You should have already R S V P'd, because it was for the first three hundred seniors and we have those seniors, okay? So hopefully, your name is on the list already, all right? But as a reminder, it's June the twelfth, and it's at Burton Manor, two seven 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 School Calf Road. And that's in Livonia, and it's just going to be a great time, and it's for District Number Twelve only, which is Inxter, Westland, and Garden City. A great time to meet and greet and just everybody coming together to have a good time with Commissioner Anderson. Also, as a reminder to you, um, next week, June tenth, will be the last coffee hour for the summer, for the summer. And of course, in Inxter, it's at the Western Wayne Family Healthcare Center. And that's at two seven zero zero Hamlin Boulevard, from twelve until one o'clock. And so make sure that you're there for that, they will reconvene in September, there's no hours during the summer, because nobody wants to meet in the summer. They want to go and have a good time, go to the county parks and just have a good time. So they will reconvene, uh, September the ninth, and I have some flyers on that as well, if anybody needs a reminder of the coffee hours. Also, as a reminder to you, I think most of you have heard that measles are on the uptick in Michigan, okay? That was something that had been rectified years and years and years ago, now you're hearing about measles. So if there are any individuals that are interested in getting immunizations for the measles, you can do that at the Wayne County Health Department, and as always, it's, it's a nominal fee or whatever, they will make sure that you get it done. And there are walk-ins, they are taking walk-ins, because they are trying to, uh, get a hold of that situation here in Wayne County. So that's the Wayne County Health Department, which is at Benoy and Van Born Roads in the City of Wayne. And I want to congratulate the church that won that first, uh, place for the Memorial Day Parade. That's nice, let's give them a hand, yeah, that's nice, that's nice, that's a great thing. And it certainly is an honorable thing for them to receive that first place, uh, award. And I'd like to thank you, thank you, thank you, I won't hold it against you, Mayor.
Thank you. Brandon Young.
Hello, all?
Hello.
How are we today?
Fine, thank you.
How are you?
I'm great, thanks for asking. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you all, uh, for allowing me to, uh, come up here and speak, my name is Brandon Young. I am the, uh, new Outreach Director for Oak Street Health. Um, and for those that don't know, uh, Oak Street Health is, uh, a primary care physician's office for, um, adults exclusively on Medicare. So, uh, we are having a, uh, high school reunion of sorts, um, for our seniors, uh, basically the class of seventy-three and back. Uh, we're having an event on June seventh. At, uh, three P M., um, it'll be food, fun, family games, um, there'll be a bounce house, so everybody can bring grandchildren, bring children. Um, and, uh, we're just there to have a good time, so, um, that, uh, the, the location is on Cherry Hill Road. That is two seven one five five Inxter, um, or two seven one five five Cherry Hill, Inxter, Michigan, four eight one four one. So, um, I can take questions at this time, if there are any.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right.
Samuel Ward Bay.
Just want to say hi to y'all, beautiful kings and queens, hi to everybody here. Um, I'm here to talk to y'all about Juneteenth, the Juneteenth celebration that we've been trying to push. We need the city's support, we need each and everybody in here's support, Juneteenth is going down at Wheatley Park. We asking y'all support, if you don't know what Juneteenth is, Juneteenth is our Independence Day, the so-called black people are Negro in America. The last day that slavery was abolished was in Texas. And it's here, we celebrate all these other, um, holidays, but we ain't selling, um, celebrating the holiday that made us independent, that made us a nation. So I mean, I don't really understand it, so I'm just here to ask y'all for the support, can y'all please stand behind Juneteenth? And, uh, help my beautiful queen out, she been trying, we been trying, but we need y'all's support. Without y'all, it can't be done, it's not our holiday, this is a universal holiday. So I'm just asking for y'all's support from, as the Executive Director of Cup, uh, we need y'all, it's, um, June fifteenth. Uh, we need y'all's resources, anything that you can do, um, we accepting poems, food vendors, we having a barbecue contest. It's gonna be a real beautiful event, but it can be a lot better with y'all's beautiful thoughts and ideals, um, peace and love.
Wait, isn't there a fundraiser we can help support you, we're coming up to?
Um, yes, we, um, have, we, we trying to put together a fish fry, but once again, it's just, um, me and Jahad Abdullah, the, um, President, I'm the Executive Director, it's really hard, we are working, we trying to do everything, working with Ms. Connie, but we doing everything on our own. That's why we at a point that we need y'all's help, we got all the stuff, we just, we needing tents, um, just different little stuff from the city, if y'all can just help in.
Give us a list, give us a list and we'll send it out to everybody, I'm sure people will pitch in, stuff that they already have. If you're accepting donations, let us know what you need donation-wise and we will put that out, try to get that coming.
Yes, anything will be, um, very appreciated.
Okay.
And the kids will love y'all for this.
June, June eighth, Applebee's?
Um, yes, we have, um, a fundraiser, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm just coming off work, y'all gotta forgive me. Um, we got, um, a fundraiser at Applebee's, June eighth, um, is an all-you-can-eat breakfast, we'd love if y'all come out and support us, I think tickets is ten dollars? Yeah, ten dollars, um, please come and support, we need y'all.
Eight to ten?
Um, eight to ten, all you can eat, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of tired, I'm beat, I'm coming off work.
Let them know that everybody that gets the events calendar, that information is on it, so a lot of you get the events calendar.
The event is from eight to ten on Applebee's, what is on, um?
Ford Road.
Ford Road and John Daly.
That's all on the events calendar.
Nope, June eighth, June eighth.
This Saturday.
This Saturday, coming up.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend George Williams.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I, um, I come before you today because it's something that's close to my heart, that I didn't appreciate that went down during the Memorial Day Parade. Now, you know, you can put your beautiful books together and various things that, raise all the money you can, pre-raise money, whatever. But it, it's close to my heart when, when you, you say people gotta pay to come out and represent our fallen soldiers. I'm blessed, because I made it back from Vietnam. But I don't feel that you should put a charge on the people of City of Inxter to be in the parade, okay? Now, you made money off your souvenir booklet and other things that you done, but to come here and tell people they can't be in the parade unless they pay a fee. I, I'm opposed against that and I'll march against it, whatever I got to do to stop it. Because I don't think we should do that here in the City of Inxter, we got too much pride for that. Over the years, many years, we always got out and, and, and paying honor to our fallen veterans, okay? And to come out here and tell somebody they can't be in the parade because they don't have funds? Uh, we, we are not that, we are, we are not that serious, we are not that serious. Okay, so I'm, I'm coming here today, the parade was nice, the book was beautiful and all that stuff, I'm not complaining about any of that. But when I see kids and, and people, uh, churches and stuff could not be in the parade because they talking about they had to pay a fee, I think it's ridiculous. And I'm just bringing it to you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I hope that we never do it again, thank you.
Jason Turner.
Sandra, what?
How y'all do, on the lighter note? Just here to talk about the summer program. This is our fifth year up and running, um, for the summer program over at the Doza Recreation Center. First year, the building was just opening back up, we didn't even have access to the whole building. We was outside for most of the years, so it's growing each year. Um, this year, uh, so the years prior, the schools, uh, really didn't promote, uh, we would get a flyer out to them every year, they never said nothing. Um, this year, I know Wayne Westland, uh, put it in a packet of flyers that they send out every month, so they, we were in a mass emailing, um, as well as, uh, I got a lot of responses from Ronless. Um, I know Al sent out an email to a lot of people, I believe all y'all as well, uh, so everybody has spread the flyer. The flyer did not have the address, so I know the people here know it, but twenty twenty-five Middle Belt, Doza Recreation Center is where the program will be held. Um, Wednesday, I will start accepting applications, will start taking the money at the rec center on Wednesday. It's eighty dollars, it's an eight-week program, we run from July eighth to August thirtieth. Monday through Thursday, ten A M. to three P M. I will allow the kids to come as early as nine thirty, I understand work schedules, and they have to be picked up by three thirty. We have a program in place with our Inxter's finest, I don't have to call them if it get too late. But not authorize them, not a daycare to keep all of the kids, so, please, come at three thirty, pick the kids up. Again, we will have, uh, the applications out Wednesday morning, um, it's only eighty dollars for, uh, the whole program.
July eighth to...
Say that again?
For July eighth to when?
July eighth through August thirtieth. Six to fourteen, six to fourteen are the ages, as well as we going to field trip every other Friday. We going to field trip, um, for those who are listening, we want to go on a field trip every Friday, it's not in our budget. I have found places for us to go for free, on the off week, a whole bunch of places, but we don't have transportation.
Talk to police chief. He's got a bus.
I'm in the right direction. So I got, I spent past Wednesday night, Citizens Academy, talk about it. Appreciate it, uh, but that's it, just wanted to let everybody know.
All right, thank you.
And my nervous brother Sammy was out here, uh, June eighth, we'll be at Applebee's. Eight A M. in the morning.
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten, ten dollars, sat at the Applebee's at the Heights, on Ford Road and John Daly, brought to you by the Community Up Project. All right.
All right. Officer Lebo.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
All right, several things. First and foremost, unfortunately, I know we have a bus, but we got that bus from the military and to use it, it had very specific conditions. Has to be sponsored by the Police Department, it has to be driven by an officer, it has to be a completely Police Department event, along with a whole bunch of other restrictions, otherwise, they won't ever give us anything ever again. Um, it's, there's a certain number of years in which we have to follow that, and after that point in time, then we can open it up to the city, but unfortunately, we just gotta bide our time, I believe it's seven years, but don't quote me on that. Oh, okay, never mind, two, I was wrong, two years.
How long we had?
Uh, we had that bus probably about, no. Yeah, and then we can use it, so we're just waiting, so, believe me, it'll be amazing, uh, resource for us to be able to use. So, and now on to our regularly scheduled programming. Um, we have coming up on the, I'm sorry, I'm looking for something. Yes, so, come and join us, um, this coming up Wednesday, June fifth, seven thirty A M. At the Booker Doza Recreation Complex for our annual Inxter Chiefs Breakfast. Chief Riley will be there in partnership with St. Clement's Episcopal Church and the Boy Scouts of America. They are having a delicious breakfast and looking for some donations to help support scouting in Inxter. As you all know, a few years back, scouting came back to the City of Inxter for the first time in twenty-five years. And it's a really great program, there's lots of camps that happen throughout the, the summer, and the kids get a lot of opportunities, but unfortunately, something like that needs funding, so we're hoping you'll come on out, like I said, this Wednesday, seven thirty A M. Booker Doza Recreation Complex, and enjoy some breakfast, just come and meet the movers and shakers in this movement, as well as hopefully, um, make a pledge or a donation. Now, we have, we, I'm still looking for organizations that want to be a part of the National Night Out. I just recently booked the video game truck, a climbing wall, the face painters, we are working on the entertainment. There's gonna be a lot of fun at National Night Out this year, or we're looking to make it like last year, but you know, as with everything, try and make it a little bit better, learn from what we did last year and make it even more fun for our citizens. But we're still looking for organizations who want a free booth. Anybody who has a, an entrepreneur, has a word, a message, anything they want to get out to the citizens, come and find me, we'll happily provide you with a space in which to do so. Um, and that's going to be Tuesday, August sixth, from five to nine P M. in the Inxter Police Department Parking Lot, National Night Out. I understand, that's the same day as the election, I apologize, I did not set the date, it's a national night out that's participated nationwide. Um, so my apologies on that, come out after you vote, please. The, June sixth, from six to eight P M., we will be having a mental health panel discussion at the Booker Doza Recreation Complex in partnership with the City of Inxter and Detroit Wayne Mental Health Authority. The panel topics will include substance use and mental health. We'll have a lot of panelists up there, uh, providing resources for our citizens as well as answering questions. It's gonna be a really great forum, I hope you'll be able to make it out. Our next Coffee with a Cop is going to be June nineteenth, ten A M. at Applewood Coney Island. Come on out for a cup of coffee, ask questions, and get to know some officers in your neighborhood. And lastly, our first movie night of the year, I'm excited, I'm excited, I love movie nights. Um, Friday, June twenty-eighth, eight thirty P M., come on up to the Police Department for our first movie night of the season at the Police, at the P D. We'll have, uh, free popcorn, hot dogs, and refreshments. We got one more day left in voting for what movie is actually gonna be shown. Currently, Secret Life of Pets is winning, so if you don't want to watch Secret Life of Pets, go vote on something different. We got about six options up there, so you can visit the Inxter's Facebook page, facebook.com/InxterPolice to place your vote. I'll be making the announcement tomorrow as to which movie won, and I hope you guys will come and join us. Um, from that point forward, we will be having our movie nights once a month as normal, thank you all.
Thank you.
Will it always be on the last Friday of the month?
Typically, I, I try to, usually it's the last Friday, but if there's something else going on in the city, I will move it to accommodate, so we don't have so many conflicting schedules.
And what time will you start?
Eight thirty-ish, depends on the sun, of course, um, we have to make sure it's dark enough to see the screen.
Okay.
Pastor Jean Overman.
So, good evening, and thank you all for celebrating City Core and the dancers, we do appreciate that. I'm actually here to make a quick announcement about Camp Inspire, and I know at the next City Council, we'll have the opportunity to present more information. But I want to get it out to all the citizens of the City of Inxter and the Council Mayor and the team that were look, excited about adding coding this year for everyone on the weekend. So that's something great, we have a young woman that's gonna actually be spearheading that for us, so alongside camp, we'll be doing something for the young men. So very excited about that, you also have the opportunity now to register for Camp Inspire online. Go to our Facebook page or operationrefuge.org, and you can register, the seating is limited, as well as the scholarships. We have some partial and some full, so please get online as soon as possible, girls, grades fifth through twelfth, so that you can get the opportunity to apply for the scholarships, thank you very much.
Thank you. Judy Neal.
Good evening, Honorable Board, uh, residents of the City of Inxter, uh, my name is Judy Neal, and I'm here... My name is Judy Neal and I'm here actually on behalf of the Western Wayne County NAACP, where I serve as the Chair of Voter Engagement and Education. We are here, or I am here, representing the branch to invite you all to a mayoral forum that will be held here in Inxter for those who will appear on the ballot, which is, I believe your election is August 6th. We are holding, let me just be clear. So it's Western Wayne County NAACP along with the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc., Eta Iota Omega Chapter, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Inc., Zeta Nu Zeta Chapter, and the Delta Sigma Theta Inc. Inxter Alumni Chapter. And so we're here asking and inviting all residents of the City of Inxter to come out to be informed as you look to cast your vote for who was going to represent you in the upcoming mayoral election. This forum will be held on Thursday, June 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Booker Dozier Recreation Center, which is located at 2025 Middlebelt Road here in Inxter. Again, that's Thursday, June 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Booker Dozier Recreation Center. And the forum will be moderated by Charlie Langton of Fox Two News. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Crystal Lynton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm so happy to be here. I don't make it here very often. On Monday nights, I'm engaged with some children. The mayor called me Mother Hubbard. The Al Noor African Dance Class has come to Inxter, so I'm with them on Monday nights. I just rushed over to make a couple of announcements. One, the Voters of Inxter Continuing Education Voice. Voice is an organization that was formed in 2014 to educate voters on various things that impact their lives. And we've done shop talks and barber shops and beauty shops. We've done forums on different things that are being voted on, different things on the ballot. And so right now, we are doing a series of meets and forums for the Inxter, stop this, Inxter Mayoral and City Council elections. So we have, we've done two. They've been very successful, very well attended, and all of the candidates got a chance to shine. I was impressed. And we have one coming up this Thursday at Booker Dozier Complex at 6 o'clock. This is the Mayoral Forum. We held one for the districts. We held two for the districts so far. And now we are having a forum for the mayoral. All three mayoral candidates has confirmed. So council residents, we are having a forum also this Thursday at 6 o'clock, Booker Dozier Complex. Am I forgetting anything?
State Representative.
The State Representative Rutledge is going to moderate. That date is June 6th. So that's coming up this Thursday, June 6th, Mayoral Forum. And that's at Booker Dozier Complex.
6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m. Hopefully just 6 to 8, but 6:00 p.m. Now, I have another announcement as well. It is track camp time. The Champ Track and Field Camp hosted by Robeshaughn High School. This year, we've collaborated with Inxter Parks and Recreation is back. This is our seventh year. And we have had four students come with us in middle school, come all the way up, graduate, and got scholarships because of the Champ Track and Field Camp in track and field. This year, we have one senior graduating. I hope to come back and tell you that he also got a scholarship. So the camp is 100% free. We try to time the camp before all of the other children's programs get started. And so it's going to be right when school lets out. The first camp at Robeshaughn starts June 17th through June 21st. It's at Robeshaughn High School, 3601 Janet Street in Dearborn. The camp runs from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Breakfast and lunch is served. I'm happy to say this year, we've also collaborated with the Wayne County Mental Health Authority, Healthy Zone. So for the children who are not real skilled in track and field, we have children who come out every year and just say they just want to get in shape. They want exercise. So Healthy Zone, the people from Healthy Zone are actually going to take the children who may not be able to do hurdles or something like that. And they're going to work with them in just learning how to exercise. So we're happy to say that. We've added that exercise and health component to the track camp. Again, the camp is 100% free. This is our seventh year. We've added Romulus High School to it as well, but we started right here with Robeshaughn. And the camp was started to combat obesity in girls. That was an injustice that we saw. And that's why it was started, but it's not just for girls. There's boys and girls. I think that's all the announcements I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Denard Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I just have a couple of questions I wanted to. I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask. I know they talked about the water situation. I remember sitting there, there was some of the tough situations that we had to really deal with, the increase in the rates. I remember some people that's on council right now was out here talking about those rates. So it's a really, that's a really tough situation in increasing rates. But I did want to ask, Mr. Carrington, has the smart meters been fully paid for? Because when I was on council, we were going through the transition of the smart meters. And it was on the water and sewage budget. So is that complete?
So those meters, as I'm sure you probably know, were funded. I believe it was with Chase, if I'm not mistaken. And so we make an annual payment. I believe we still have two more payments. Don't quote me on that. But we're still paying those. So those are still a part of the, I know they're a part of this coming fiscal year's budget. So we have not completed the payments on those meters yet.
Okay, because when those are completed, that would be able to alleviate some of the pressure that's on the water and sewage so that we won't have to really kind of increase rates. So we want to kind of look at that because, you know, we don't, nobody up there wants to.
Yeah, and that's the exact point. I would just say, we generally do kind of a three to five-year outlook. So, you know, we, instead of the water rates, we generally do not do it on a year-to-year basis. We're looking at a three to five-year projection going out. So to some extent, that is factored in when those payments do. But to your point, that is a correct observation there.
Yeah, we really need to look at that, you know.
You have to also keep in mind too, part of the water rate is, there's fees in there for infrastructure. Now, we know we're going to have to rebuild our entire city's water infrastructure.
Yeah, we know we had that.
I don't want people to be disillusioned, think the water rate's going to go down. It's not going to go down. We have to rebuild the entire city. I mean, seriously.
Yeah, that's why we kind of set some of these policies in place with that 15% capital improvement project policy that we had set before. So that when these types of projects will come up, we would be able to have money funded for some of these projects. I know it's going to take several years down the road, and this is that, you know, five-year projects, you know, vision that we have for the city. So I understand that, Mr. Mayor. Also, I know you talked about the sidewalk, I mean, the street program. Now, is there going to be a schedule that's going to be provided so that we would know what streets are going to be done? Because there is some terrible streets that needs to be done. I know we're working on some major streets, but we need some side streets. Matter of fact, Rosewood, Avondale, you know, I'm just plugging those in.
We laid out the schedule for the major streets already in the state of the city. The local roads, we have not set a schedule. We met today with the engineer and we're going to set up a, we've already identified through a Pacer study what streets need to be repaired. And we've got a couple of different methods. We have to do, in some cases, replacement, concrete replacement. And other situations, we can do more of a sealing, which is a patch. If you have a pothole, you can patch it and seal it, and it'll last five to seven years. So we're laying out that schedule for our local roads, our neighborhood roads.
So you have. Believe me, I know. So you'll lay out a schedule for it. Now, on Rosewood, between Harrison and.
Yeah, I mean, you're three months or, three minutes or.
I know, I mean, yeah, I mean, I know, and I appreciate the three minutes.
I mean, we are, it's on the website. We're doing John Daly this summer. We're doing engineering for that now. We expect to break ground from Michigan Avenue to the bridge, Inxter Park. We're going to replace John Daly. Infrastructure and road, that's going to happen this year. We're looking at doing a joint venture with Westland for Henry Ruff that will break ground in the spring of next year. We have not obviously brought that to council yet. We're crunching the numbers so we can present it to council, see if it's even doable. And we haven't forgot about Avondale. We have to do Avondale, and that runs the length of the city. So we're looking at six or seven million dollars just for Avondale alone. So we're going to have to do that in sections. And then we got Harrison. You can barely drive on Harrison in certain places. So, you know, we have some obstacles in front of us. We got to knock them down. We got to keep chopping them down until we get them all done.
Now, Mr. Mayor, you did take a couple of my minutes, you know, talking extra.
I ain't take none of your minutes.
You're talking a little extra there. We're going to get some extra talking.
You get extra 15 seconds. Go ahead.
Now, on Rosewood, Rosewood, real quickly, Rosewood, between Harrison and Magnolia and Helen, there is a sinkhole. And, you know, I mean, every time it rains, I mean, this is a sinkhole. So that really, really, right now, needs to be addressed because people have to go around. They can't go through their streets. They can't pull out of their driveway. That's really a tough situation that the people have to face. You know, when it rains and when it snows, it get cold, it freezes. We can't put no salt down on top of that ice. And it's not going to do us any good. So we definitely need somebody to take a look at that.
Oh, we have, it's on our concrete replacement list.
Okay, now, here, I want to pass.
You got more?
I want, I want the council to be able to see that, and also, Mr. Mayor, to be able to see that. Now, that's a park over on Avondale and Helen.
And Helen.
Now, that park is really dangerous for the city. Now, one of my initiatives, when I was on council, was to get that park redone. We didn't have the money. We didn't have the funding to be able to do it. Now that park is really dilapidated. The kids are over there. They're going to cut themselves on that slide. The slide only has like three legs on there. And I do not want the city to be responsible or liable for any lawsuits. We had dealt with so many lawsuits, and we don't need no more lawsuits. So if you could take a look, Mr. Mayor, I know my time is up.
I'll go over there. Thank you. Will Miller.
Son Helen, this manor park, and I've already started a discussion about it.
Good evening, Council, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm going last, so a lot of stuff I was going to say, didn't say it already. And she told you about the track camp. While I'm here, I do want to commend the Western Wayne National, the NAACP, for the work that they've been doing under Gina's leadership. They are doing tremendous, tremendous work. I was going to announce that, and then they brought the super delegate, Ms. Neal, with them. So I didn't get a chance to say any of the stuff I wanted to say. But I do want to thank Mr. Bevins, a lot of folks in the neighborhood was real happy with the patchwork that has gone on over in our neighborhood with the streets and everything. They are very excited about it. So they was like, oh, they came out and somebody called me real early in the morning and was like, hey, man, they did it. I was like, oh, okay. He was going to do it. So I really do appreciate it. Another thing for the rec, I am one of the cadre of folks that's going to be running for office. I am running for the 4th District this year. And I'm going to be having a launch party coming up. Also, at the rec center that everybody has been speaking about, so support the jewel. Everybody want opportunities to come up to do some stuff with the rec. You see how many times it's been said this evening. So try and pitch in for it. June 9th, 6:00 p.m., I'm going to be having a launch party there. While I'm doing stuff like this with the community, I like to have a good time. So I'm going to have silent auctions, food, music. We'll have a good time and talk about what things is going on with the city in this election rec. So I appreciate the time. Thank you all so much. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, everyone. Did Gina, Gina, does she have a question?
I'm sorry, someone had a hand up? Oh, I didn't see it. No, 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 we finished them all. Glad you said something. Pastor Jean. Come on, you turn one in. Come on up.
Good evening, kings and queens.
Good evening.
I want to actually piggyback off of Judy Neal. I'm not really too sure as far as what she said. But general membership for the NAACP is thirty dollars. Those who are not members, all are invited to become members. We have our meeting, June 10th, next Monday at 7:00 o'clock at Christian Faith Ministries. That's 27500 Marquette Garden, Garden City. Like I said, everyone is invited, and it's a thirty-dollar membership fee. And I believe it's if you're under 21, under 18, under 21, it's ten dollars? Ten dollars. So, you know, like I said, we want all the youth and we really, we really should try to, you know, invite as many people to really, you know, advocate for the national advancement for the Association of Color People. So, you know, I appreciate that. Appreciate the time, Doctor. Kings and queens and council members, y'all have a good one.
All right, thank you. Felicia.
As you all know, we have the primary that is coming, August 6th. AV applications have been mailed out. The ballots will not be into the clerk's office until June 22nd. But you should have started to receive your AV applications and turn those in, and then we'll get you out of ballot as soon as we get the ballots in the clerk's office. Also, if you're interested in being an election inspector, please contact the city clerk's office at 313-563-9770. And that is a paid position. Thank you.
Right, Mr. Treasurer.
No announcements, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman White.
I thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank all of those people who assisted me in presenting this year's 50th Annual Memorial Day Parade. I want, I want to especially, now, I'm not going to start naming names because you know you always make a mistake and somebody gets mad and never speaks to you again. But I would like to thank the Reserve Officer of the Inxter Police Department. I went to their meeting to ask them to be a little bit different this year with the residents. They were phenomenal. They were saying, please, and thank you, and yes, ma'am, and no, ma'am. Can I give you a lift here? You want a little money? How's your kids? And I will, I will be attending their next meeting and trying to let them know how much I appreciated how they worked. Now, secondly, I would like to address paying for a Memorial Day Parade because I'm good at it. I do it all the time. I get out and hustle. I don't spend one penny of the city's money giving that parade. All the sponsors and the people, the businesses in the city contribute to that. And anyone, no one was turned away from the parade because they didn't have the fee. And those that paid the fee didn't read the application because they owe me another twenty dollars because it said five dollars for every day it was late. And they turned it in the day of the parade, okay? And those same people complaining about that, the last three were free and I didn't see a minute. So I am so tired of people preaching unity and practicing divisiveness here because it's unnecessary. We, we are a community that is trying to grow, and we will never grow as long as people use personal animosity to get their points. as long as people use personal animosity to get their points across, okay? This is about Inkster. This ain't about you, it ain't about me, it's about Inkster. And guess what? I'm for Inkster, okay? Y'all for Inkster. Let's hear it for Inkster. Mayor?
You done?
I think that's all I had.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Good evening, everyone. You did hear Sammy Ward Bay come up and speak to you about the Juneteenth celebration on June fifteenth? And don't forget the ping, the, the all-you-can-eat breakfast at Applebee's this Saturday morning from eight to ten on Ford Road. But I'd also like to announce that on the actual day, June nineteenth, there will be a middle passage ceremony. Middle passage had to do with Europeans coming from Europe, bringing goods, then going to Africa, getting captives, dropping the captives here in the United States, and then going back to Europe. During that period of time, from the fifteen hundreds to the eighteen hundreds, over two million Africans were lost because they were mistreated, they were crammed in the ships, they were subjects of pestilence and all kinds of disease, they were starved, et cetera. So what we want to do as a part of the Juneteenth celebration is to commemorate the fact that we did have a black Holocaust. And that middle passage was our Holocaust. So we will be on the nineteenth at six o'clock PM at Inkster Park on the John Daly side. Crystal Linton is going to lead our ceremony. My niece has agreed to do an interpretive dance commemorating the middle passage, and we will probably have Jason do some spoken word. We're going to throw petals into the water in recognition of those people that we lost. When you think about the things that have been suffered by us as a people, there's no reason in the world that we should never remember what we've had to go through. And there's no reason why we should become wimpy about who we are and where we have to go through unity. So I hope to see you all there. Now, you're supposed to wear white. That's your tradition. Now, we'll be in the park, so you don't have to come glamorous, but just have on white. If you don't have full white, have something white on. And that's the way that we will honor our ancestors on that day. Six o'clock, the nineteenth of June, Inkster Park off John Daly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard?
Five dollar.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to piggyback on what the mayor said with a couple of council meetings in regards to the census. It's very important, and I think he said county was...
I have a meeting this Friday.
And it's very important, you know, to go to the meeting, but it's very important that you answer your doors.
Right.
Because this affects on funding that we get. So make sure you answer the doors and make sure you give an accurate account of who's living there. And it is a percentage of what we get. So I just wanted you...
Funding.
Just wanted to let you guys know, and then, Holly, I didn't know you was having a meeting.
Well, I'm going to Wayne County for their gathering to get more information. And then, once we get that information through the county, we'll be ready to get the program started here in Inkster.
Okay, now, when do we have to have all of that turned in?
The actual census is in 2020.
Yeah, April first and the April...
We're getting ready to get started. And you're right, the big thing is for people to open the doors.
Right.
We have to do some work on misinformation where people think that if I give you my information, you're gonna track me down and put me in jail and all of this. I will say that I believe we do have some people who are non-residents in our city, non-residents of the country I've met. So we'll have to learn how to deal with that. I have a volunteer who's gonna work with me to speak with any Spanish-speaking residents we may have in our city. So we're already, and I'm looking for someone who can speak Arabic so that you can help us out too with interpretation. So as soon as I go on Friday, Mrs. Strowman is going with me. We're gonna get the information from Wayne County because it's a county-wide effort. And then we're going to come back with, to Inkster with a plan for outreach and getting things done in the 2020 census. You're exactly right. Everyone who isn't counted is dollars we don't get. So it's very important that we get dollars counted. I mean, people counted so we can get the dollars.
Now, my next question, county, do we get any kind of funds for that? So maybe we can do a mass mailing to residents?
I'll let you know on Friday.
Okay, okay, all right.
After Friday.
Okay, thank you, that was all I had to say, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Chisum?
Good evening. So it has been asked, and June twelfth at six PM, we're gonna get back started with the Ink Town Pedal Pushers. It's a great time to see two parks, Inkster Park as well as Colonial Park and the Ride on the Bike Path. Hopefully, this rain has subsided because it floods down there heavily.
Yeah.
And the mosquitoes are terrible. So it's a great time to come out, ask questions in a relaxing environment, and just kinda see different parts of the city, specifically down there where you normally wouldn't go. It's a non-formal matter. You give your input, and last but not least, it's good exercise. And that's what we always promoting in the city of Inkster is good exercise, good health. So just come out, participate, and let's get fit. Also, I'll have the new pamphlets out. I'll be sending the emails to the pedal pushers. And remember, we do go on Facebook Live because everybody doesn't necessarily ride, but they like to, how do you wanna say, live...
Vicariously.
Vicariously, there we go. Through the lens of our cell phone, so, and then they comment, they engage.
You gotta get GoPros.
Say that again?
You gotta get GoPros.
We'll get, well, we'll, we'll find some funding to get GoPros. Let's put it that way. But I just encourage you all to come out, unicyclists, bicyclists, tricyclists, and four-wheelers. So, well, non-motorized, non-motorized. But yeah, just come out and enjoy with us, everybody. I love the support. And six PM on June the twelfth is this Wednesday, June twelfth at six PM. And that's just the tentative start time. I know how we are. We, we get there when we do, but come out and join us. And that's Inkster Park is where we'll start at on John Daly, just north of Michigan Avenue. And that's all I have. Say it again? The date? Oh, the meeting, Inkster Park on John Daly, just north of Michigan Avenue. So right where the bike path starts at.
Hey, Mayor Protan?
Thank you. I just have a few concerns of the citizens. On York Street, some of the citizens are concerned about having the trees trimmed. So we still have them, that program. But they said they have talked to the city, and they haven't heard back yet. So it's funny, we're just gonna get around to trimming the trees on York Street. We'll come back.
Yes, we are.
Hello? Yes, we in, Mayor Protan, we are in the process of gathering more information and continue our tree trimming program for the summer.
Okay. Also, a citizen that had a concern about the fire hydrant in front of her house, she says she hasn't seen anybody come out to maintenance the fire hydrant, and when, when are we gonna start painting them again? Now, having noticed around the city, there are some fire hydrants that don't have caps on them. So let's forget the fire department and see when...
Yeah, we inspect them every year.
When do they annually, annually inspect the fire hydrants?
We inspect them every year. No, when we first got elected, they went out, we had a grant, and they painted them. I remember that. And we inspect them every year because they gotta make sure they're functioning. But I don't know what month they actually do the inspection.
Okay.
Fire chief was sick today, so I will find out and send it out to everybody.
Okay. Citizen has a concern about the property on Harrison, thirty-one oh three, it's a duplex, thirty-one oh five Harrison, high grass. I looked it up, I think it's our property?
Is it us?
At one time, it was on the NSP list, so...
It's probably not ours.
But for two years now, nothing's been done with that property. So we can look and see who owns that property, and have them go out there and cut the grass. Yes. It's a duplex that's at the corner of Harrison and Cherry, thirty-one oh three and thirty-one oh five. And the last one, on trash day last week, we asked everyone to move their cars off the street, and they did that because they came five days, they didn't clean the street. So I was asking the administration, can we like tweak that time a little, little more?
I mean, the issue was, obviously, we've had twenty-one days of rain out of twenty-eight in the month of May. And when it rains, the street sweepers don't sweep the street. Unfortunately, the way we scheduled it is we sweep your street the day after your trash day. Now, if it happens to rain that day, we have no way of notifying you, oops, we're gonna be back two days later because our signs are very specific. Because it told you, you know, if your trash day is Monday, we're coming to sweep your street on Tuesday. Now, with the contractor, because it's an independent contractor, we're trying to come up with some sort of arrangement where, okay, then you just come back that next week on that same date. So at least you'll know, we'll leave the signs up that next Tuesday, you'll know to get your streets up. It was tough, though. The first one was tough because it rained every day.
Right.
And then the contractor said they're gonna do two routes in one day. So they're supposed to do mine on Friday. DPS sends out a notice, I see the street sweeper going down my street on Thursday. I'm like, then my phone stopped buzzing. All my neighbors calling me like, look, Mayor, I thought you said Friday. I was like, yeah, you know. And then people start complaining because you obviously are not sweeping where the cars are parked.
Well, my phone rang because my day was on, my trusty's on Thursday. Well, it didn't rain on Friday.
But they backed up from the other day.
So, so their call says, okay, we moved out of stuff.
Which is not good because the trash container's out there. So, you know, all type of issues. That's a tough one if the weather doesn't...
To try to tweak that, you know, so, because a lot of people, we said we're just gonna find them.
Compound that, we had a holiday Monday. So there was no sweeping Monday, which pushed everything back a day too. So like the mayor said, we're asking the residents here, and the residents are watching. You have to be patient because we're rolling out these signs. We haven't used signs in many years. So we have to get implemented and activated to us putting the signs back out on the street. So we asking that you be patient. You know, it's, it's not gonna be perfect because like the mayor says, when it rains, I don't sweep because that defeats the purpose. So when that happens, you know, I, the mayor made me set up a Facebook page because my own wishy, but I try to put information out to the public as fast as I can, as fast as I can get it out there to you. So I'm just asking that you be patient and work with me this first year, and we can improve on this program.
Now, also with that, the quality of the sweeping, because it's like they drug more dirt, more dirt and mud down the street than they clean. So I think, I don't know if anybody went behind them to see Holly was doing it, but I took pictures of it. Okay. I'm just asking people to be patient right now. And just remember to continue to shop Inkster. Thank you.
Oh, boy. All right, just real quick. Last week, I got a chance to go up to Mackinac Island for the Mackinac, the Detroit Regional Chamber of Mackinac Policy Conference. Up there, meeting folks, other politicians, business owners, state officials, trying to make sure we bring resources back home to the city of Inkster. It was a very successful week, tiring but successful week. While we were up there, the governor passed a new auto insurance law. Have you guys saw it on the news? Yeah. So we were, it was all on the porch of the Grand Hotel, so they got that. I think it goes into effect next year. It'll give people options in order to take less coverage if you have healthcare insurance, and your premiums will go drastically down for your auto insurance. Not a perfect bill. It was a compromise. But she did tell us when she was running, she was gonna work across the aisle and make these type of compromises. And hopefully, she'll get something in return that'll help us all. We just don't know what that is yet. Land, oh, last year, I think I told you guys, we were working on trying to get the land back from Taylor Public Schools, which includes Federal Ralph, Lincoln Elementary School, where it used to be at least, and the park right next to the Simmons Center. We finally received those closing documents on Friday. That land is now ours. Excuse, sorry for the delay, but the superintendent of Taylor got real ill last year. And he was out about four or five months, and that delayed this whole process. We've been working on this for over a year. And I finally handed David the deed to file tonight. So we got that land back, and that's something we can plan for now to redevelop and use that land because it's right in, right in the middle of the neighborhood. It's a two good piece of land and the park. The park, we, we need to put some money into. Okay, don't forget, the Summer Fest is coming up, July fifth, sixth, and seventh. We got the roster pretty much confirmed. Everything is a go. We got Denise Williams headlining on Saturday night. Got Chico DeBarge singing on Saturday night, Bunny DeBarge. We're hoping, crossing our fingers, the Elder Barge comes. Friday night, we got Tornetta Davis singing the blues. We're gonna have some local young folks, also about eight acts from our community Friday night, so we can see some of the young talent in our community. And of course, we're gonna do gospel on Sunday. Clonte Gavin is gonna headline. I think we're gonna have Ricky Ballard too, from Triumph Church, who's gonna sponsor him. And then we're gonna have several other gospel choirs, local choirs from Detroit, Inkster. It's gonna be a good weekend. But make sure you plan for that. Well, hopefully, we have good weather. We're gonna start marketing on the radio, so you'll start hearing it and tell people, and let's come on out and have a good time. Everybody say a little prayer for Clarence Odom. He wasn't feeling well. He's dealing with some health issues, so he couldn't be here tonight. So just keep him in your thoughts, and that's all I have.
Motion for...
Motion for adjournment.
I'm sorry. What text? What'd you say? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I usually ignore Jerome's text messages. Now I gotta find, okay, here it is. Okay. The CCR report is available. If you like a copy, send us your email address to dps@cityofinkster.com. Tell them what the CCR report is. All right, we can't, we can't hear him anyway. Usually, every year, right. Every year, we typically drop it at your doorstep. They always end up in the street, in the sewer, and the grass. So we're gonna try to send it to you electronically this year, post it in the paper, so we don't have that same issue. All right, we get slap happy over there. Okay, who got the text? Okay, probably move supporter, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
That's too much.